April 28, 2025, meeting of the Sandusky City Commission will have an invocation offered by Commissioner Waddington, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
God our Father, as we gather for the meeting this evening, give us guidance and wisdom to make the proper decisions. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Myers, you call the roll.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Coons?
Here.
Mr. Crable?
Here.
Ms. Fargo?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Bajali?
Here.
Commissioners, you have before the minutes of our meeting of April the 14th, 2025. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I'm with that we accept the minutes of the April 14th meeting as presented.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, that motion will be approved in hearing, no objection. Those minutes are approved. First on our agenda tonight is the Mayor's Monarch Proclamation. I want to acknowledge the support that this effort has received from Commissioner Waddington over the years. I think it was Commissioner Murray several years ago that remarked on the significance of the world's strongest man ending up being the protector of one of our most delicate treasures, the monarch butterfly. So this is a thanks to this commission, past commissions, and especially to Mr. Waddington. I will read the proclamation, and as I usually do, I'm going to leave out a lot of the whereas is because that gets kind of cumbersome and confusing, I think. The monarch butterfly is an iconic North American species whose multi-generational migration and metamorphosis from caterpillar to butterfly has captured the imagination of millions of Americans. Both the Western and Eastern monarch populations have seen significant declines, with less than 1% of the Western monarch population remaining, while the Eastern population has fallen by as much as 90%. The city of Sandusky recognizes that human health ultimately depends on well-functioning ecosystems and that biodiverse regions can better support food production, healthy soil and air quality, and can foster healthy connections between humans and wildlife. Cities, towns, and counties have a critical role to play to help save the monarch butterfly, and Sandusky is striving to become a leader. On April 21st, 2025, I, Richard Brady, signed the National Wildlife Federation's Mayor's Monarch Pledge and have officially committed to taking meaningful action to protect the monarch butterfly by initiating planting programs within our city. Every resident of Sandusky can make a difference for the monarch by planting native milkweed and nectar plants to provide habitat for the monarch and pollinators in locations where people live, work, learn, play, and worship. Now therefore, I, Richard Brady, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Commission President of City of Sandusky, do hereby proclaim April the 28th, 2025, as Mayor's Monarch Pledge Day in Sandusky, Ohio, and encourage all residents to participate in community activities to support and celebrate monarch conservation. Signed this date, April the 28th, 2025. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I think we ought to also thank Colleen Gilson. I handed off a bunch of paperwork, and she got that done. But one quick pointer note. Dennis, could you share, years ago we were at the greenhouse when you grew up, along the lake, how the trees were filled? I've been up to Wendy Park in Cleveland. I'd mentioned it to Colleen at the last meeting. It's something to see, seeing coming across thousands.
It seems unlikely that I will run again, so I can admit that I grew up in Huron. And I did. And we grew up right along Old Omer Creek. And it was a beautiful piece of property, right on the water. And I was just a kid. I didn't know it was anything special. Lake was just the lake. It was always there. But there was a little pond there, and there were three giant pin oaks. And, you know, I'd be out in the backyard, and I remember just looking up, and there would be all three of these trees filled with monarchs. And it seems like a strange story to tell, but it was still often when I would see all these monarchs in those trees. And they had a peculiar smell. It wasn't pleasant. It wasn't unpleasant. It was just a peculiar smell. But when you see them masked like that, it's really something. I haven't seen them masked like that in a very long time. And if there are any, if this is a coal mine, monarchs are the canary. Then we're in trouble. Thanks for asking.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. And Mr. Waddington. Next, we have the CDBG 2025 Action Plan that will be presented by our program administrator, Nicole Grohe.
Good evening. So tonight, we have an action plan for the 2025 program year. So for the action plan, we have to do public hearings. This is public hearing number two. The Community Development Block Grant. The city of Sandusky is an entitlement community, so that means that the city receives funds directly from the Housing and Urban Development Department. With these funds, the city is allowed to carry out activities which meet any of the three objectives listed below. They must benefit low-to-moderate-income families, aid in the prevention of slum and blight, or do a community urgent need. So the 2025 CDBG program year begins July 1st of 2025, and it goes through June 30th of 2026. The city anticipates an allocation of approximately $708,428. Under the grant, there are certain requirements that things cannot be exceeded. I know it's a little tricky to see that, but it says 70% must limit low, moderate-income families. So off of that number, that would be approximately $495,000 or more. 20% max can be budgeted into program administration, and so that is up to $141,000. And then 15% can be budgeted into public services. So the maximum of that can be $106,000. Just a quick timeline. As I said earlier, this is the second public hearing. On the May 12th commission meeting, the commission will consider turning in the action plan, hopefully. We had a public comment period. There were no public comments received during the 30-day period. We also met with the CPAC Committee on March 25th, as stated previously, the final adoption will be considered next commission. This is the draft budget. This was same as in the first public hearing. I'll go through it briefly. The program administration costs, there's a recommendation of $95,000, and then a fair housing consultant from $9,500. For public facilities and improvements, public works and street resurfacing is $265,000. And then for community development and public open spaces, there's roughly $65,000. Under the activity of code enforcement, it's recommended for $60,000. And then, under public services, that's divided into the city's youth program, which is $50,000, and then the sub-receipients, which we are still awarding those. We just haven't quite got that squared away yet. I'll go over that in the next slide. But that has $55,000. And then the rehabilitation, there is a lead paint program for $84,000, and healthy homes program for $25,000, and that's in conjunction with the Erie County Health Department. The sub-recipient applications that we received this year, we got applications from United Way, Father's Heart Church, Erie County Senior Center, OGO, and New Jerusalem Church. So those projects are still being considered, and announcements will be made once the funding is awarded from HUD. We generally don't find that out until May, June. And that is all I have. If anyone has any questions.
This is a public hearing. We'll take any questions or comments from the public regarding this plan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way. As is always the case during these programs, the concern is always shared of how much money we're actually spending in-house for administration. And the rules say up to a certain amount, which is $141,000 and change. Again, the concern always is, is that we're spending too much money for administration. We should lower that and find a way to keep some money out for other issues. One of the issues that comes up every year is rental assistance for the low-to-moderate income. And we don't see that, I don't think, in this program. Nicole can correct me on that. But we're not seeing that in this program for rental assistance. We're still having trouble out in the street. Last figure I heard is 25% of Sanduskyans live in or near, in or above, in or below the poverty level. I'm sorry. I fixed my teeth. But that's one of the issues that we've heard year after years, that we're spending too much on administration and not anything out of this fund for rental assistance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwanger. Additional comments from the audience? Comments from the commission?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bajali.
I believe that the chip dollars can be used for rental assistance. So maybe that would be an avenue to slice off a portion of those chip dollars and put it in the category of rental assistance when the chip gets all configured.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
On a related note, my recollection is, it's been explained to us over the years, I don't believe that we spend the entire permissible amount on administration, but if Ms. Grohe, you know that number, that would be helpful to know. And then, because, my understanding also is that because of the complicated reporting requirements, this is administrative intensive. The federal government understands that, and that's why they allow a certain amount to be spent on administration. If you could comment, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, the administrative cost for this year proposed was $95,000, with $9,500 for fair housing. So it's even lower than that. And that doesn't just pay my salary. That pays support staff's salary, too. So if that clears anything up.
Thank you.
Excellent suggestion. Mr. Bajali, on the chip program, I think we can look into that and find if we can find some rental assistance out of that. Be a good thing.
Mr. Murray. Nicole, the sub-recipient applications, who makes the decision on who's awarded those?
There is actually a matrix that's attached to those applications. So there are three staff in-house that do it. I usually don't say who, just because I don't want people, you know. But that is how, and if you want to look at them, you can.
Okay, thank you.
Following up on that, those, if they're more than $10,000, they come before the commission for approval, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Additional comments, commissioners?
I was actually just going to state that. Those decisions are ultimately made by all of you as commissioners.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions from the public or from the commission? Thank you, Ms. Grohe. I know how much you enjoy this, so you're excused.
Thank you.
Any residents with comments regarding tonight's agenda? Please step to the podium and share with us your name and address and the agenda item comment that you wish to make.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way. I had some questions. I'm going to combine item 1, 2, and 3 together, which is different forms of tax abatement for different businesses in the city of Sandusky. To be clear, the tax, I want to make sure that the public has to clear that the tax abatements are only on improvements only, or is it on the entire property? That'd be number one question. And number two is, the enter zone, enterprise zone, is that the entire city of Sandusky, or is that just, are there boundaries for that? Item number nine, which is the MOU with customs and customs at the Jackson Street Pier, it looks like we're spending $44,000 on communication equipment. And the question is, are we being reimbursed through customs for that work, or is that something that we're going to be paying for and not getting reimbursement back? Need clarification on that. Items number four and five, if at all possible, this is a constructive suggestion, that when we refer to sale of property or purchase of property or any kind of property issues, can we also include the home address instead of just the parcel numbers so that the public who pays attention to the agenda can identify the address instead of just having to go to the auditor's website and having to look up those numbers? And sometimes the number comes up, sometimes it doesn't. So that's just some constructive idea for into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwanger. Additional comments on agenda items from the public? Commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation. Can I have a motion to accept those communications?
So moved.
Second. Been a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, that motion will be approved in hearing, no objection. That motion is approved. Commissioners, we have four items on the consent agenda this evening. Do any of you wish to move any of those items to the regular agenda? And I think we had a question regarding a, do we have a question regarding a consent agenda item? I guess we did not. We started with the regular agenda. Great, okay. Ms. Myers, you present the consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. President. Item A, approval of East Perkins Avenue Waterline Replacement Project Change Over, Change Order Number One and Final with Buckeye. Item B, approval to submit application for Housing Technical Assistance Program fiscal year '25 with ODOD. Item C, approval of 2025 Office 365 Annual Agreement from Insight Public Sector. Item D, approval of agreement with Dinerji Energy Services East for Large City Accounts.
Commissioners, having heard these ordinances and a resolution, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Move for the adoption of these ordinances in the resolution pursuant to Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call the roll on that motion, please.
Mr. Coons?
Hi.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances and resolution.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Those ordinances and a resolution are approved. Ms. Myers, you present item number one of the regular agenda.
It is requested an ordinance be passed approving the Community Reinvestment Area Agreement with Campbell Lofts LLC, authorizing the city manager to execute the Community Reinvestment Area Agreement, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
I would move to adopt this ordinance in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I wonder if Ms. Gilson might walk us through the process. A question was asked about just seeking confirmation that the abatement is only on the improvements, and it's only 75% of the improvements. So the other taxing authorities, including the city and schools, continue to earn all of the income, the real estate taxes on the underlying property, plus 25% of the taxes, only 25% of the investment. But the question was also tied, so if you could confirm that, and then it was also tied with a question about the enterprise zone. I know that map has been presented to us multiple times. It is my recollection that enterprise zones in the city comprise the majority of the landmass of Sandusky, but I don't remember. And I don't remember the specifics of how that is categorized, but I believe it's by percentage of low-income population in those areas.
I will confirm what you stated. It is for improvements above and beyond the value of the property. I apologize for my voice today. I believe it's allergies. And it is 75% abated for those 10 years. So I will confirm what you're stating. And as far as my involvement with the enterprise zone and the question about boundaries, the entire city of Sandusky is eligible for enterprise zone tax abatement.
Thank you, Ms. Gilson. Additional comments or questions? Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that motion, please.
Mr. Coons?
Abstain.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number two.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with GMA Asset Management Group LLC relating to property located at 314 West Market Street, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance pursuant to Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
This is really great. I did comment, I didn't make this comment with respect to the last piece of legislation, but we're watching, we're looking at two old historic and special buildings in the city of Sandusky being repurposed that were both at risk. The first one that we voted on just previously was the Campbell School, and so a large chunk of that will be converted into residential. With this one, this is the registered property, and that's also an historic building, and it'll be great to see that repurposed and people living downtown.
Additional comments or questions, commissioners? Mr. Murray, I'm in complete agreement. It's always our hope that buildings can be repurposed, and this one happens sooner rather than later, which is always a benefit to the city. I cannot imagine these buildings, as they're not developed, they decay. They turn into empty lots. They turn into empty spaces, and that does not bode well for our city. So it's a wonderful opportunity for our city, and I presume it's a wonderful opportunity for the new owners, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Right on. Mr. Murray.
I would add to that, that they, that if that slide continues, and we've seen a lot of our tax dollars spent, we end up footing the bill for the demolition of those properties. So it's really, I mean, this is a, this is a, I don't know if I'd say it's a penny saved. It's more than a penny saved, or a penny spent. But it's a penny spent and a pound saved, and it ends up being a good investment for the taxpayers in the end.
Additional comments or questions, commissioners? Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that motion, please.
Mr. Coons?
Abstain.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Coons?
Abstain.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number three, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with Toff Sterry Incorporated relating to the property located at 3717 Venice Road, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move for adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Could reiterate what a great corporate entity Toff have been over the years, and it is, our contribution to this, which we passed a meeting or so ago, is minuscule compared to the amount that they're investing. I believe the number was $7 million. And these are, these are easy things to grant abatement on because it does, it does continue to move our city forward, and I would challenge any of you to say that you've not sampled their product. Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that motion, please.
Mr. Coons?
Abstain.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed, with or without Mr. Bajali.
You and Waddington are going real fast.
Ms. Myers, you present item number four.
It is requested an ordinance be passed declaring that certain real property owned by the city located at the southeast corner of East Market Street and Franklin Street, and identified as parcel number 56-00348, and a portion of parcel number 56-00350 is no longer needed for any municipal purpose, and authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement to sell the designated real property to Joe Hunter and Maureen Leahy, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons.
Move for approval of this ordinance under item four in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Gilson, I don't mean to answer for you, but I will answer a question that a resident, Mr. Schwanger, had regarding posting addresses. And my experience is, and it's relatively recent, is my daughter and son-in-law purchased a property around the corner from here, that their address was not established until they had actually broke ground. So it is oftentimes difficult to identify a property with an address because it doesn't really have an address at that point. Would that be correct?
That is correct, Commissioner.
And I think we appreciate the suggestion. Anytime we can be more transparent with our residents is a wonderful thing. And I think we strive to do that, and I think we're successful most of the time. We have provided a map. Oftentimes, someone watching at home doesn't get to see that map. But perhaps we can, you know, post that online or do something, something to further that education. Still, a good suggestion, but there is a reason for not having an address because we don't have an address.
Mr. Chairman.
Additional comments or questions? Mr. Crable.
How many more lots are there that are available in this, in this particular neighborhood? Because we've been selling property off here now for a while.
I don't believe we will be bringing any additional lots for sale. I believe we have them either in a development agreement, or what you're seeing today is for sale, in this block.
Right. I know adjacent to this, or nearby this, we had at one point seen a proposal for townhouses, but we haven't heard anything about that for a while.
Right.
Maybe, I'm not asking to know now, but at some point, maybe it'd be nice to know what's going on.
I would imagine you'll probably be seeing it within the next few months.
Okay.
We're working actively with the developer.
Thanks.
Additional comments or questions, commissioner? Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that motion, please.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
And now on the motion. Now on the ordinance.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number five, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed declaring that certain real property owned by the city located at the southeast corner of East Market Street and Franklin Street, and identified as parcel number 56-00349, and a portion of parcel number 56-00350 is no longer needed for any municipal purpose, and authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement to sell the designated real property to Tina Lees, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Mr. Crable.
Okay. Yes, I would move approval of the ordinance under item number five in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bajali.
Just, just for my recollection, what did we pay for these lots?
Sorry. I think it's $105,000 total.
That's correct, Ms. Gilson.
That is correct. Thank you.
Excellent, excellent recall. Wow. And congratulations, as I understand, you've doubled our money.
More than.
Pretty good.
Can we invest with her?
Are you taking new clients? Additional comments? I'm glad she didn't ask for a commission.
She has one sitting in front of her.
Ms. Myers, will you poll the commission on that motion, please?
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number six.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an amendment to the agreement for professional design services with Chagrin Valley Engineering of Cleveland, Ohio, for the East Cleveland Road US Route 6 sidewalk, curb, and drainage project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair. The adoption of this ordinance in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Crable.
I don't recall why this change order is being requested. Is there someone who can give us that?
Mr. Klein, I'm sure you have the answer for that.
Yes. Back in 2025, we had a question.
Yes. Back in 2023, we had a project that was already under design, which was a sidewalk project on the south side of Cleveland Road, east of Harbor Parkway. And we were looking for an avenue by which to find outside funding for that, and we found ODOT applications that were available. And at the time, we were also looking to put in a second application in December for three crosswalks downtown in Washington Park, one on Columbus, just south of Washington, and then the two mid-block crossings on Washington. ODOT liked both of the projects and asked us to combine the two of them, and then they would give us the funding. So we combined them. So this change order is for the design of those three downtown crosswalks, which will be new signal, new RRFBs, those rapid flashing beacons, and then bringing the plans on the east end of Cleveland Road up to ODOT standards as well. So that's an additional $44,000. And at the time, we were going to do Cleveland Road sidewalks and drainage and all that stuff with city funds. So this, that grant application supplemented the city funds, which is why the original funding for that project was out of the Capital Projects Fund, and they're allowing us to use that extra, those extra dollars that we got to pay for this extra engineering at a 90-10 split. Very good.
Mr. Klein, oftentimes, I think our residents view things like this as additional charges for work that they missed or someone missed. The reality is, in this specific case, it's really additional work. It's not, it's not additional money for work that we'd already, already bought.
Yes, this is additional work, and it's one of those things, when you, when you get the ODOT funding, there's additional work that needs to be done for that portion as well. So really, we're paying about, what is it, $5,000-ish to receive that 1.5 million from them. So it's a pretty good deal.
Pretty good return on your money. Almost as good as Ms. Gilson's.
We're still striving.
Additional comments or questions, commissioners? Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that motion, please.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number seven.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to expend funds for the repair work to be performed on the city's 2020 Horton ambulance body by Atlantic Emergency Solutions of Macedonia, Ohio, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wantington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Chief, we got some bad paint.
Yeah, that is correct. The patient compartment, the body, the patient compartment has door frames that all the sealant paint is chipping off of them. So currently, we have a staggered warranty plan for the paint, and we're in the fifth year of that warranty, responsible for 50% of what the cost of that repair is going to be. $34,000 is the total amount for the repair, which seems like quite a bit. So we solicited a second opinion, and to pay half of what the manufacturer's warranty price would be was actually cheaper than what we solicited as a second opinion. So we're going with what the manufacturer, what their, their contracted collision center that they use for their work, and that also allows us to keep the remainder of the warranty intact, too.
Did they share with you how long this vehicle would be tied up with that, and is that a greater hardship for you?
No, assuming it passes tonight, they're going to pick it up tomorrow morning, and it's supposed to be gone in about three weeks. I told them it had to be back in time for Bike Week because we need that extra ambulance in service during that downtown block party.
And relative to the cost of the ambulance, paying $17,000 to get a new paint job is a lot better than paying $300,000 or $400,000 for a new ambulance, for sure.
Yes, and the ambulance is scheduled to be around till 2035, so we need to make it, make it last until then.
Great. Additional comments or questions, commissioners? Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that motion, please.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number eight, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to expend funds for the purchase of Windows Server Core licenses and client access licenses to computers at Work Incorporated, doing business as Vitaeo of Naples, Florida, for licenses for city servers, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons?
Move for approval of this ordinance under item eight in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that motion, please.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Now on the ordinance.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present the last item, item number nine.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the U.S. Customs and Border Protection regarding the reimbursement of costs related to providing communications and information technology equipment and services at the customs center located at the Jackson Street Pier, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to adopt this ordinance in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
So, I don't know who I asked this question of. Do we get reimbursed for these costs? And if not, or did we put communications in this originally? And if the answer, first question is no, and the second question is yes, what is our contractual obligation to spend additional funds, if any? Sorry, it was a three-part question.
The answer to all three of those is that when we entered into a memorandum of understanding with them back when the pier was being rehabbed in 2020, or before 2020, there's an agreement that every five years, we have to update their computer and software needs. So it's a contractual requirement with the federal government that the local government take care of their software and computer needs.
And to follow, if I may, Mr. Orzak, what, what protection do we have that they're not gilding the lily and putting in an exorbitant amount of software for something that is used fairly infrequently?
I don't have the answer to that. I would have to look, but there, I know the agreement says that we have to, have to supply them with the necessary upgrades that they need.
Yes, but if they, if they want to be supplied with a Rolls-Royce, that's not our obligation. So I don't know, I don't know how to gauge whether this is an appropriate expenditure of funds.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Crable.
Along the same lines, I would ask, what are we getting for $43,000, $44,000? That's, that's an awfully substantial computer, and I'm sure there's some software costs in there as well, but still, I would, I would, I don't know, it just seems extreme to me. I'd like to know what we're getting for, you know, was there any discussion, let me put it this way, was there any discussion between the Customs and Border Protection and us as to what it is that they think they need and what those costs might end up? Or did they just say, we need $44,000?
I'm not sure what the communication was. I know that the, we would not be able to operate a port of entry, so the Pele Islander would not be able to enter. So that's what we're getting for supplying them every five years with whatever their necessary upgrades are. Otherwise, we would not be, we would not be allowed to have the Pele Islander and passengers and vehicles come to Sandusky.
No, I certainly understand and appreciate that. What are we, what are we receiving in the way of lease for that property?
Aaron, do you know that? You were involved at the...
In other words, are we spending more than we're receiving?
I think, I think that's somewhat of a complicated question, and I don't have a specific answer for you, Mr. Crable, but it is necessary to have that site there
Oh, yeah.
in order, in order to have the ferry from, from Pele arrive there. Without that, we cannot entertain what I guess you call international travel. And I, my understanding is that we have a five-year agreement with them. I guess this commission has not been appraised of what exactly is in that agreement, to be able to make, make a decision on whether, as Mr. Murray put it, whether we're gilding the lily here, or are we paying, you know, for something specific?
Mr. Chair.
Why would, so this was done contractually when the pier was renovated and they were coming in. So some of you were here, do not recall the, the agreement, us getting into that agreement?
I certainly recall getting into that agreement, but I don't recall any of this.
Okay.
I don't recall the specifics.
I'm sure we could get that pretty easily.
I think we, I think we can, too.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I will take responsibility. I should have asked these questions in advance of the meeting. It's unfair to put staff on the, on the spot like this. I normally, if I think through these questions, I sent it, sent an email over the weekend or late the preceding weekend. I just didn't think to do that in this instance. So, I mean, I think the commission has two choices. We can, well, we have three. I don't think denying it's a very good idea because then we're in breach of contract.
Right.
But we can either table it potentially until we have some additional information, or we can pass it subsequent to getting additional information with the presumption of regularity that the staff is just doing what they're supposed to do pursuant to the terms of the agreement. I'm fine either way, but I also don't want to inhibit the Pele Islander ceiling here if it's expected to come in the next two weeks.
Mr. Chairman, I, when I looked at this, I thought the cost was pretty high. I thought, well, I wonder if they would at least let us use those computers if we had a computer issue. But I did recall when I was with regional planning, and we would do some work with the area Ottawa International Airport over in Ottawa County, they needed to build a new customs center, and they had no say. I think it cost $350,000, and there was no negotiation. Either you build it this way to our specifications, or you just don't bring anybody in from outside the country. And that was the end of it. So they were on the hook for big price tag.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Crable.
I echo what Commissioner Murray said. I, I'm 100% in favor of keeping, you know, them there, keeping the commerce going, you know, with, with our friends in Canada, all of that. I just think from, from a standpoint of due diligence on the part of the commission, it's, it's good to know what it is that we're, the details, what it is we're voting on.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I would say there's significant doubt about whether our friends in Canada are going to continue to be coming here this summer, or whether we're going to be welcome when we go over there. But I agree that we should do what we need to keep it open.
I, I don't believe that tabling this issue for two weeks would have a negative impact on our memorandum of understanding or our contract with them, or would jeopardize that office being open. If I'm incorrect, Mr. Orzak, you can certainly correct me, or Mr. Klein, if you're involved in it, you could certainly correct me. But I, that's why perhaps a motion to table would be appropriate for additional, additional documentation. Do you think we're in jeopardy with that?
I don't think so. Do you still?
I don't know. I do know they did list the equipment being purchased at the end of our pack, at the end of our packet. The most expensive thing was a small router, but I'm no expert on the cost of routers, for computers. Another big purchase was for passport readers. And that's, you know, that's how it's all broken into.
You know, I'm glad you shared with us that that document exists, Mr. Hastings, and, and I guess I would point out, I'm not sure that we are in much of a bargaining position with the federal government. So I, it certainly is this commission's decision, but I don't, I think you're, I think you're wasting your time tabling this and not going forward.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Fargo.
You know, and I, while I understand we should know what we're paying for, it's, it's incredible that spending this much time on $40,000 versus a Bridget Mills golf course for over $200,000, and no one asks a lot of questions. So I think we can read, and John can get the information, and I think it'll be well worth it. We'd hate to lose that.
Additional comments or questions, commissioners? Ms. Myers, I'll ask you to poll the commission on the motion.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. That concludes our agenda, and we'll turn to our city manager for his report.
Good evening, commissioners, audience, and staff. I'd like Mr. Hastings to provide
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. That concludes our agenda, and we'll turn to our city manager for his report.
Good evening, commissioners, audience, and staff. I'd like Mr. Hastings to provide us an update on some of his staff.
Oh, thank you. I'm very proud to announce that last Friday, the Ohio Supreme Court announced that our Assistant Director of Law, Melanie Murray, has passed the bar exam, and she's going to be sworn in as a pool fled. And on information and belief, she passed with a very high score, so very proud of her.
Good.
Thank you.
Standing.
With donations, Commissioner Waddington has donated $75 to the Friends of the Greenhouse. We'd like to thank him for his continued support. Get a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion and a second discussion? No objection, that motion is approved with our thanks.
Sandusky Fire would like to thank Pamela Justy for a donation of $60 made in memory of Jeremy Neese. Thank you, Ms. Justy, for your generous support. Get a motion to accept that donation.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion? No objection, that motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved with our thanks.
Sandusky Transit would like to thank the City of Vermillion for their continued $20,000 donation for Sandusky Transit. The funds donated will be deposited in the Transit Fund to help offset operating maintenance. We get a motion to accept that donation.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion? No objection, that motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved with our thanks to Vermillion.
And Sandusky Rec would like to thank Mary Jane Holler for donating $259 of her winnings from the 50-50 drawing at Midtown Supper Club back to the Sandusky Rec. This will go towards our scholarship fund. We get a motion to accept that donation.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion? That is excellent, and we thank her. Without objection, that motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved with our thanks.
And then we'd like to thank the Hall of Fame Barbers for providing free haircuts to the kids on spring break camp. Get a motion to accept that.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion? No objection, that motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved.
On May 10th, the fire department, from 9:00 a.m. to noon, will be participating with Red Cross and partnering together to install smoke detectors in one of Sandusky's neighborhoods. The neighborhood involved will be bordered by Wayne Street, Water Street, Meigs, and Washington Street. Any resident questions or concerns can be directed to the Fire Prevention Office at Public Works Camp Street should be reopened within the next two weeks. The completion date for the demolition of 1528 Columbus Ave is June 6, 2025. The contractor anticipates receiving brass fittings for water services along West and South Forest Drives over the next couple of weeks. Once received, utility installation and resurfacing should be completed by the following month. And then qualifications were received from three design-build teams for the landing project. The next step, which includes accepting proposals and performing interviews, will occur in May. Staff is hopeful to award the project over the summer. And then lastly, I was asked by the commission to provide some updates on specific topics that came up, so I'm going to go through those, and if you have questions, I'll take them at the end there. But there's an update on the rec center. So meetings will take place throughout the month of May and early June with a criteria architect and city staff to finalize specifications for the criteria architect. The goal is to finalize RFP packets by June 9 with commission approval for permission to bid to follow on or about June 23. City staff is also beginning fundraising efforts from businesses and donors for naming rights to certain portions of the recreation facility. For the State Theater, the ordinance 23165 was the one that there was a million-dollar grant awarded to the State Theater. We had paid that half a million at the beginning of the project per the agreement. The city has not paid the other half million until that project is completed. An additional... The ordinance 24156 was for the programming. We have not made any payments to the State Theater on that. Staff had met with the bonding company contracted representatives a couple of weeks ago. They are still doing their due diligence, working with the state and contractors to determine what the next steps will be. The bonding company won't provide any timeline or be affirmative on when their due process was going to take place, so we don't have any information on that. At this time, the city doesn't expect construction to resume before the summer begins, so we've asked the State Theater to start dismantling the construction site and have that done and completed by Memorial Day. I was notified today that they're going to start that process, so that parking lot should be available for the summer. And we don't anticipate, based on information that we have, that the State Theater will be open this year, obviously. So that's an update on that. And the last thing was the Beckling Building. The city just received the causeway agreement over the weekend, so we're evaluating that. As part of that, the Beckling Building is going to be donated to the city as part of that package, so we're still working through that. We anticipate to have something to commission by June on both of those agreements so that we can get both of those finalized. So that's the update on those three topics, and I'm happy to take any questions on that or any other matter.
Comments or questions for the city manager? Mr. Waddington.
I think a lot of folks, I think everybody at this table and employees at the city will be happy now when somebody asks you at a coffee shop or shopping in a store that the state is shuttered to the end of the year, and beyond that, we don't know nothing. But that'll help because it's repetitively that I get questions. I'm sure everybody else at this table does, too. So that's sad in a way. You know, I think we all want to see it flourish and reopen, but right now, it's just not going to happen. So that might help. And we can get them parking spots back. I think that's going to be big. Does anybody have an idea how many spots that would be?
I would guess about 30 or somewhere in that neighborhood.
Half the lot.
105 on that property.
So 40 anyway.
Maybe as many as 50.
Yeah, that'll make a big...
That'll be helpful. Sure. Comments or questions for the city manager?
I don't know whether to bring this up now or under old business, but I wanted to go back to the matter with the buying of the computer equipment for the... Down at the port. Do we know, is that equipment still titled to us, or do we buy it and then it becomes titled to the federal government?
I did not review the agreement with that in mind. I'm assuming it's theirs.
It's a reimbursement. They're purchasing it, and we're reimbursing them for their purchases, so it's their equipment.
Okay. Thank you.
Items of old business, commissioners, any items of old? This is only about a half a week old, and I would like to share with you what a successful venue was provided at Mills School last Thursday, I think it was, at the Supper Club. More than 200 folks attended, and not only did they get a terrific meal, but they got entertained. And as is evidenced by this $259 donation, that person won, that was so generous to return those funds to the program and to the city. But that, you know, we had... I think we had about 20 young people that were billed as chefs in training, and I think we all realize that those 20 people are not... Maybe they're not going to end up being chefs, and maybe they won't end up in the food business at all. But what they learned in the last seven weeks, and it was a seven-week program, was a work ethic. They learned that they need to show up, and they learned a lot of things that are going to benefit them as they continue to grow. So our thanks and kudos go out to Tondra Frisby, who is the brains and the motivator behind that, and the entire staff. Many of our own staff are there pulling that along and helping it. That's one of those kind of things that knit this community together. As I looked around that room, there were some people I recognized and some people I've never seen. So there were obviously a lot of moms and dads there, a lot of grandma and grandpas there, but there were an awful lot of residents there, too. So it was, all in all, it was a wonderful evening. And thanks to her, and thanks for staff, anybody that pitched in to help that. And I think a lot of people from a lot of different departments played a role in making that a success. Additional items of old business, commissioners? Any items of new business? Any items of new business? Mr. Murray, would you have an item of new business under an executive session?
Oh, I was hoping you'd forget. So I make a motion to have an executive session...
Sale of property.
Sale of property, thank you.
Second.
It's been a motion. I think there's been a motion and a second discussion.
There's a board.
Ms. Fargos, you poll the commission on that motion.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Pajali.
Yes.
That executive session is set. Additional items of new business. Now we'll move to opportunity for residents to comment on any item regarding city business.
Third time's always the charm. Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way. Received a call over the weekend from a good friend of mine that lives in the 42nd, 50th Street area, and she shared with me that as part of the sidewalk program that the city's paying for, that a number of driveway approaches were replaced, and a number of walkways leading from the sidewalk up to the homes' front porch were replaced as part of that project. And I don't know if that's standard issue, or if that's just something that we're doing out of the goodness of our heart, or exactly how that works. That's, you know, and I don't expect an answer today, just I'm just bringing it up. And the other... The second item is, we've all seen the mural that's being put on the side of the Sandusky Register, the new project that's going on in there. I was able to go back and look at some of the ideas for that mural, and part of the mural that's being painted is in accordance with those examples. And I have nothing against Perkins Township. My uncle coached football there in the '60s, but half the mural is highlighting and showcasing Perkins Township. I think there's a picture of a band member on the left-hand side, and it says Perkins Wins All. And then there's a tribute to Sports City, which was out at Home Depot. So I'm just curious if this painter went off on his own to do this, or I don't see where the actual design was approved by the Arts and Culture Committee. So that's something for you guys to think about and, you know, research if you would. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwanger. Additional comments from residents regarding any item pertaining to the city? Mr. Lamarc, I don't see you making a move.
I'm good. Thank you very much.
Thanks for being here, though. We will adjourn to our executive session.
Upstairs, right?
Upstairs, yes.
Are we paying this girl?[1219.58]
We've returned from executive session at 6:28.